If I forgot about Carlisle Place and Workman's Comp.
Yeah.
About one thing, run by you.
Right.
What did they do? You might know somebody over there.
And do we do, do we just, so is it just another ballot and the machine just reads where they are? That's, yeah, so that's.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey. Let me speak.
To get the legal stuff out of the way, I would like to announce the in compliance with the provisions of RSA thirty-two colon five and forty colon three, two, sections A, C. The School Board of the White Mountains Regional School District, including the towns of Carroll, Dalton, Jefferson, Lancaster, and Whitefield, is holding a public hearing on the proposed twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget. The hearing is this evening, January eighth, at six P M. And anybody that needs one, the informational packets are available at the front of the hall as you entered. And so I would like to introduce myself. My name is Robert Loyakono. I'm the chairperson of the White Mountain Regional School Board and the representative, a representative from the town of Whitefield. And I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting to my right. Or actually, starting with the vice chairman, mister.
All right. Hi, my name is Herb Brandall. I am the vice chair of the board and I'm one of the, oh, sorry. Oh, okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Peter's. Right, right. Okay, one more for Peter. Here we go. So my name is Herb Brandall. I'm one of the Lancaster representatives and I'm a vice chair of the board.
Jim. Okay, my name is Jim Brady and I represent Jefferson. And Peter, I can lend you my hearing aid if you need it.
Allison Tannapale.
Tara Giles, Whitefield.
Chris Van Bergen, Lancaster.
And if the rest of the head table wanted to introduce themselves.
Sure, good evening. I'm Marion Anastasia, superintendent.
Hi, I'm Melissa Wasworth, the finance director.
Rob Scott, Assistant Superintendent, Lancaster resident.
And the school board clerk, Stephanie Glidden, at the end. Before we begin, I would like to recognize Lori Cozen, who's the newly elected state representative from COAS seven. Thank you for coming tonight. So tonight's hearing is an opportunity for explanation and feedback. And from there. I'm sorry, before we do that, the, there are two board seats that are up for reelection this coming March. One is the member from Jefferson, Mr. Brady. And the other is Tara Giles, one of the representatives from Whitefield. So anybody that might be interested in running for those seats. The timeline for the opening of the application to run is January twenty-second through January thirty-first. And all forms are available at the central office. So tonight's hearing is an opportunity for explanation and feedback. The deliberative session will follow on February fifth, at which time the voters can discuss amendments to budgets and warrant articles. Voting by official ballot will take place on March eleventh at each individual town's polling places.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could we do the salute to the flag, please?
We usually do it before the board meeting where we. I know, I'd like to do it now. Public hearing. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yep. We could do it again if we want.
So we go on to the next slide. Presenting will be Chris Van Bergen-Boodo. And what I'm going to ask is probably the easiest way is if, as each presenter does their one, two, or three slides, at the end of that, we can ask if there are any questions pertaining to that. And then again, we'll open up to questions and comments at the very end. Does it sound fair?
Your mic closer.
Closer, sir. Thank you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
One more journey, more time. Thank you. So the first thing we really like to make sure folks are aware of is that as the budget is shaped each year, we do that, or largely, the district leadership team does that, always keeping in mind the core pillars of our strategic plan and also the focus areas for education here in the district. The strategic plan's core areas are structure and finance. We want to make sure that we're really optimizing the infrastructure of the district and using our resources wisely, making sure that we're as fiscally responsible as we can be with the budget, despite the fact that we're always doing that in the context of unfunded state and federal mandates and a funding mechanism in the state of New Hampshire that is challenging and challenged at the moment. So for structure and finance, that's where we, we rest there. In terms of district culture and wellness, we recognize that we are raising the next generation of citizens as they pass through our educational system and that the schools play an important role in that in partnership with the students' families. So we really do focus on making sure that we have a culture within our schools that promotes engagement by our students and our educators alike and that we're really paying attention to things like safety and health and inclusion in the schools so that people feel like they are in a safe place and are ready to learn when we ask them to. And then finally, in the teaching and learning space, we are working very hard to make sure we're implementing curricula that are innovative but also balanced, that we're meeting requirements that are set by departments of education at the state and federal level and are meeting the needs of our local communities as well as we turn out graduates who ultimately become our workforce and at various points, regardless of what careers they pursue. When we talk about the focus areas of the district, innovative and effective instructional design is, is a priority for us, for sure. And make sure that we're providing opportunities that challenge our students and support their, the development of continuous lifelong learners. So we're really making sure that their continuous learning is happening at all growth levels. And what that looks like, if you're in our schools, observable practices are things like flexible and varied grouping to make sure that our students are working not only with peers who are at the same level but also at different levels. We're talking about differentiated instruction so that people are being instructed in ways that resonate with them and that we're constantly working to engage our students in the community of school, that our teachers, our educators, are able to put together engaging lesson plans so that it's, it's fun to be at school. That's the goal ultimately, that we're creating this environment of students who love to learn and teachers who love to teach. That allows our students to participate in their educational process in multiple ways. Another important focus area for us is formative assessment. There are a number of assessments that are required in schools these days by all manner of agencies, but we want to make sure that when we're doing assessments of our students' progress, our teachers receive meaningful data that helps them to develop those engaging lesson plans and to make sure that they are providing that differentiated education to our students along the way. That makes sure that we have the evidence and the data that we need to adjust the way instruction and support is provided to students over the course of their learning. What that looks like in the classroom, again, you would see things like how much time they wait for an answer from a student after they've posed a question. They might see a position of inquiry, teachers asking questions and encouraging students to ask questions of one another to bring forward information, making sure that students recognize that they can serve as resources for one another and some peer teaching opportunities there. And then also sharing the learning intentions and the success criteria. What that means is they're saying, at the end of this lesson, we're hoping you will be able to demonstrate this skill or this competency. Here are the criteria that would show me that you understand the information we're teaching you. And then finally, we work to build positive and effective classroom environments. That is as much about the built environment as the people who are in it. So we want to make sure that our classrooms and schools are safe, that there are predictable routines that can be followed well by all members of our school communities, that they are practiced and visible at all levels of our school communities, and that the people around our students are welcoming and respectful, that they're engaged and courteous with one another, and that we have strong professional relationships across the district. So those are, those are the things that are considered as we put together a budget, not just the dollars and cents, but really what our end product will be as an educational system.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for the slide four? Moving on to slide five, superintendent.
As you know, we're functioning this year on the default budget. So the district leadership team was charged by the board to come as close to that default budget for, to present for this budget. So we did our process a little differently this year. We started out with working with the principals. Of course, the cost drivers are the staffing. And we worked, we looked at the class sizes and the programs of study from the high school and came up with appropriate staffing. And then after we, we worked around the staffing, we worked with the directors. And the directors are the facilities director, the director of curriculum, the special ed director, the, well, who else did I forget? The A D. And we had to identify the mandatory things that we need to run, to run this school. For example, all the, the tech needs that we don't see every day, but it, the infrastructure that's involved in the technology in the district. And I'll get into the facilities in just a minute. Our CIA director identified all of the, the curriculum that we needed to purchase, which is different than we, what we have done in the past. In the past, the teachers and the principals have identified that. In order for us to have a consistent curriculum across the district, we had our CIA director do that. And then the next thing we did was we worked on mandatory costs and identified those. The heating, the electricity, the maintenance of, all the maintenance of the buildings, special ed. You'll hear more about special ed when our special ed director comes and explains those slides. Then, of course, the collective bargaining units. We are bound by the CBAs to provide their increases in their health insurance. And then we did some level funding reductions. We looked at this year's budget and last year's expenditures, things like supplies, furniture, office of the principals, and we level funded those and we also reduced those. So we came in with the leanest budget that we absolutely couldn't. You'll see, we only, you'll see in later slides that it was sixty-nine thousand dollars over this year's default budget. So.
Thank you. Any questions on slide five? Moving on to the next slide and Mr. Brady.
Good evening. If you take a look at the chart, before we begin that, the proposed budget reflects a balanced approach that we're trying to accommodate this year. We had asked the superintendent and the administration to try to keep the budget as low as possible. And so they did, this reflects a balanced approach to the budget. All right, the largest percentage increase is in the district-wide cost of seven point four-four percent. And this is driven by the infrastructure and the operations of the plants. The largest dollar increase in total operating budget is four hundred and thirty-five dollars and four thousand, four hundred thousand and thirty-five dollars and six hundred and eighty-three dollars, showcasing the district's ability to manage rising costs while prioritizing essential services. Now, if you take a look at the chart, you can see at the top is the total operating budget. And there's a change of three hundred and ninety-one, three sixty-eight, okay, for a percentage of one point six-seven. All right, the district and the district. This would include, it's a change of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, sixty-three dollars. And it's a percentage change of seven point four-four, which doesn't reflect the same as the chart, I'm sure. No, it's, I'm, I, let's go by the chart, okay? And so the district has fifty-three thousand, seven hundred, fifty-three dollars change, okay, for three point one-nine percent. The special, special education district wide is six point eight-five percent. And that is an increase of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Special education instruction in schools is an increase of three point eleven percent for an increase of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Staffing for regular education and support services is a hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars for one point two percent. The operating cost, curriculum, tech, and the other costs in operating is an increase of seventy thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars for a minus two point four-one percent. Are there any questions?
Anything, any of mine, I have a statement as far as some easy questions that don't have a solution paper?
Yes. Mr. Cronin, would you like to discuss that? Mike Cronin is the director of special ed.
Hi, I'm Mike Cronin. I'm the director of Student Services, also a resident of Whitefield. So the state does provide us with some funding at the end of the fiscal year, some reimbursement money for costs that exceed three and a half times the state rate of tuition for students with special education needs. We were informed by Concord not too long ago, about a month and a half ago, that the percentage that we did expect is going to be, that we are going to see is going to be lower. And the state has decided that they're not going to try and seek some additional funds to, to fund the, the anticipated that we were going to see. But we do typically see a percentage of money spent for students with I E Ps who exceed a certain amount of money for their education that is reimbursed to us by the state of New Hampshire. So that would, yes, that would go, that would come back to the district after those invoices are paid. That money would come back to the district, certain percentage of that. It's not as large as we would like to see, however. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Why was there a decrease in state funding?
My understanding is it was because of a decrease in expected revenue. I can go as far as that right now. That's something that we will want to talk with our state legislators about, about whether or not they can make up that shortfall that, that they're anticipating and what that might mean for the future as well.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions on that side? Moving on.
All right, I will talk about the next slide, which is the cost drivers for regular education in our next year's budget. You've heard the word balanced quite a lot already, and I think that's really the theme of our budget this year. There's, we were talking about this at the last school board meeting. There's so much spending as we go through the budget that's really kind of baked in. There's things that, for example, the salaries for the teachers, that C B A, there, there are raises, salary increases passed by the voters last year now come to us in this year's budget. The health insurance, you know, when, when we see those increases come in, six point one percent increase for support staff and administrators, fifteen percent increase for the teachers group. We don't really have a lot of control over that. It's, that's what it is for at least the coming year. The same with the unemployment and workers' compensation insurance that went up a little bit. Maintenance staff, we need to add a halftime equivalent position, which comes to fifty-two thousand. Operating costs, just like you at home, you've seen your electricity and your fuel costs go up. It's the same here. We just have to pay what our, our contracts in the market requires. Vehicle maintenance, these are, we do have more vehicles that we use to help lower costs for our transportation contracts, but they need maintenance as well, so offset that a little bit. There are some decreases. It's not all bad news. So there are some curricular, co-curricular programs and athletic programs that we can eliminate. These are things that are budgeted but haven't been filled or are underfilled. New Hampshire retirement, this was a nice surprise, that cost went down pretty significantly. And Vermont Transportation, we're making changes to that. And it's also a reflection of the numbers, so that's down. And then some staffing changes, which will bring us to the next slide. Any questions on that?
I can speak to that if you want.
Sure.
We have some tuition students that come from Vermont and we provide the transportation. However, that is not mandated, so we are now eliminating that bus route for them. However, there, there is an alternative way that they can get to school that's not going to cost us any money.
Just to clarify, we are paid tuition from those towns in Vermont that send their students to us. Sorry, I earlier neglected that one of our board members, Evelyn Flynn, from, representative from Dalton, was not able to be with us this evening. So for tonight, I will be Evelyn, as well as Bob. So on the next slide, we, explaining a couple of staffing changes for the next fiscal year in regular education. We have a decrease of one full-time equivalent teacher by retirement. And then another full-time teacher leader that's not being filled this year. And two full-time equivalent positions that we are reviewing to see if they will be renewed or not. So those were figured into the budget to reduce, in, to reduce the budget. Then we have some leadership changes and restructuring it with the high school administration. Moving forward in the next year, we will have one high school principal who will maintain leadership and the oversight of the school operations. We will have a high school assistant principal slash bar grant coordinator, where they will do the traditional assistant principal role as well as coordinate and run the bar grant receipts. And forty thousand dollars of that salary will be funded from the bar grant itself. We also combine leadership and do one C T E director slash dean of students. And that's about it. Any questions on slide eight? Yes, sir. Rob Christie from Lancaster, can you remind me what a bar grant is?
Sure. Mike Curtis, do you want to talk about that? Mike Curtis is the bar grant coordinator here. And this is our third year of the bar grant, a substantial amount of money. This is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we were just granted. However, we have five, we had five hundred.
Yeah, I think Dr. Anastasia just.
Go ahead.
Recapped it. Mike Curtis, Jefferson, good evening. So, thanks, Peter.
So we've partnered with the Bar Foundation for about six years. And we are on our third round of bar funding. And it's a foundation based in Boston, Massachusetts, who look for schools who are doing innovative work moving forward. So we, we, we gave them kind of like our, our vision and our next, kind of how we want to see the high school over the next three to five years and, and pitched that type of programming. They looked at our proposal and liked what they saw, so they gave us our third round, which is not normal, of bar funding. So it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the next two years. And they do look for like that, that tax for the community who, who has that vision and with that extra funding can really move their, their building forward. So we're very fortunate to partner with them again. Any questions? Yeah, thank you so much.
And quite a bit of that money goes to professional development for the high school, actually, middle school through high school. That doesn't come out of our local budget.
Any other questions on this slide? Moving on, introduce again, Mike Cronin.
Well, thank you to the board for inviting me to come up and talk with folks about special education budgeting. Give me one second just to get my paperwork ready here. Okay, on the slide in front of you, you will see a breakdown of special education costs for S A U thirty-six, some historical information as well as what our proposed is. Now, this budget addresses the needs of our most vulnerable and challenged learners in the district, ensuring that they have access to a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment as required by federal law and state regulations. This includes students that are here in our three buildings as well as students who attend programming out of district. Some of them here in the state, close by, and some of them down southern part of the state. Those are students with more intense disabilities. Some of them are struggling with multiple, both neurological and physical medical handicaps that require specialized care that we cannot provide here in the district. It also includes students who are currently with I E Ps, Individual Education Plans, who are attending school up at the Hartwood Charter School in Jefferson, a pretty cool program up there of public school students. In the state of New Hampshire, students who are attending charter schools who do have special education disabilities, those services are administered by the traditional public school in the, the towns that they are residing in. So up at Hartwood, we have right now fifty-six total students that reside in the geographic confines of S A U thirty-six. And of those, seventeen. of SAU 36, and of those 17 have individual education plans, and we are responsible for administering that. That includes academic support services, literacy, math, writing, could also include some speech therapy, occupational motor therapy, counseling therapy as well. Right now, we have full-time special educator up at Hartwood, and two paraprofessionals, which combined are about a 1.75, 1.8 FTE in support of those 17 students. We do receive some state aid for the special education component for those students, but as you can see, there's a, a pretty good increase in the cost to administer the program up at Hartwood for FY '26. Next line down, out-of-district tuition and residential, that's the tuition and the related services for, right now, 12 students from our district who are receiving their education in other programs to provide for those more intensive needs. Of those 12, eight are high school students, and four are elementary or middle school students. Of those 12, four of them were placed in those programs by DCYF and court orders, and eight of them were placed by the district. The increase in out-of-district tuition is a function of the increased tuition costs that we see on an annual basis, as well as increases in transportation costs for those students as well. And actually, below that, out-of-district transportation has been broken out, we are providing transportation to a number of students who are attending those programs, Berlin, St. John's Bay, and Plymouth. Unfortunately, programs that meet those students' needs are a bit of a geographic distance away because of where we're located. Certainly, if we were in Manchester or Nashua, we might have some options that would be right there within the city limits, but we, we don't have that here within SAU 36 with the addition of the, with the exception of the Easter Seals Program just down the road. We do our best to control those transportation costs by making sure that students are carpooling if they're going to the same school, and we have also brought on another van and a driver to make the run back and forth to Plymouth, where we were able to save ourselves just a little under $24,000 from last year. District-wide costs, including contracted services, that includes my salary, partial salary for administrative assistant, it includes some services that we contract through the Bridges Foundation, which is located over in Maine, they provide wraparound services in district for students with some intensive needs. We're looking at it as an opportunity for us, for some of our students who do have some of those intensive needs, to receive some of those services here in their local school in their community rather than having to head out to one of the other intensive programs. And right now, I believe we have six students, five students, who are participating in that program. Of those five students, three of them are in the process of scaling back the services that they were receiving, those started just after we came back from COVID, to the point where we are going to be seeing very minimal support services, they are now functioning independently, coming to school every day and accessing their education with their peers. Bridges Foundation has been an incredible resource for us here in the district, and we're looking forward to continuing the partnership with them. Lastly, instruction in school is primarily the, the salary and benefits for our special educators, our related service providers, speech OT counselors, as well as paraprofessional salary and benefits. Any questions in regards to that first slide that I can answer for folks? Hearing none, Mr. Norris, could we move on to the next one? Cost drivers, I think I've talked pretty much about this slide already. The primary cost drivers are going to be tuition for out-of-district students, transportation in our extended school year program. So a certain percentage of our students with IEPs qualify for extended school year or summer school programming. I say qualifying because it's not an automatic, just because a student has an IEP doesn't mean that they automatically get summer school services. Our ESY Summer School is primarily four weeks during the month of July, three days, three to four hours a day, and the goal of extended school year, summer school programming is for those students who, when they are away from day-to-day instruction, regress and would have a very difficult time recouping the learning that they had and the information and skills prior to their vacation. We want to make sure that we maintain some skills, so that when they return in September with their peers, they're picking back up where they left off and don't have the lag in retaining those skills that they might have, having been away for 10 weeks. Couple of decreases, residential costs, so we are required to pay the educational, academic or instructional costs when a student goes to an out-of-district placement, whether we send them as a district or whether DCYF sends them. Oftentimes, when a student is sent to an out-of-district placement, removed from their home by DCYF, they're also placed in a residential setting as well, because home setting may not be appropriate at that time. We are not responsible for the residential costs when that happened, we're only responsible for the instructional costs. Right now, we do not have any students that we are paying residential fees for, even though DCYF has placed four students, they are taking care of the residential costs for those four. Contracted services are down by $78,000, that would be contracted additional occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, folks that we do not employ but might need for a specific need. An example of that would be students who need augmented communication or alternative communication, they may be communicating via computer, we have a specialist who comes in, evaluates the need, and gives us recommendations for how to assist those students, that would be one of those contracted service costs. As I mentioned, just a little bit under $24,000 savings in transportation, and then we will be utilizing, we will be requesting to utilize just a little over $100,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund for Special Education to offset the increase in special education costs that are proposed for the '26 fiscal year. Any questions in regards to cost drivers? Thank you, Mr. Norris. Last slide is just a, a bit of a historical picture of special education need as opposed to district enrollment over the past six years since the 1920 school year up until today. All of these figures are as of October 1st of each of those school years. Over the course of the past six years, we have averaged 238 students with IEPs, preschool through age 22. The state of New Hampshire requires that we provide some students with the opportunity to continue their education until the age of 22 if because of their disability, the pace of earning their high school credits is slower. That's not a common occurrence, but for some of our more students with intensive needs, that may be an occurrence. But since the 1920 and '20 school year, approximately 238 on average, as you can see, over the past six years, the number of students with IEPs in the district has remained pretty steady and pretty stable. That's in the face of declining enrollment, we all know that that's been happening. As a function of mathematics, as our special ed numbers stay steady, but the district's enrollment declines, our special education population rate continues to go up each year. We're just not seeing the, the same proportional change in IEP numbers as we are in overall enrollment numbers over the years. Just a little bit of a deeper dive that I've done into this to see if there's any specific disability that has increased or decreased over the past six years, and we're not seeing any specific disabilities increase or decrease. We're not seeing preschool numbers necessarily significantly increase or decrease either. This has been an overall pre-K through 22 number that's remained steady over the past six years. Any questions in regards to the third slide? Yes, sir.
Again, Rob Christie from Lancaster, looking at the graph, we see the decline in population, but the, the IEP is pretty steady. To what extent is the decline in population, does that, they say for '24, '25, the 883 students, does that represent the census in the district, or does that represent the ADM, the Average Days Enrolled, does that? What I'm getting at is there are private schools now that take away some of the student population, and so is that 883 doesn't include people who have opted to go to private schools?
No, this is solely preschool, three-year-olds through 12th graders, or as I said, those few students who are with us beyond age 18, 19, 20 years old. So it does not include any of our private schools in the area, it does not include the charter school within the area, or homeschool students either.
Well, what I think about is, it seems like the school district bears the responsibility for a fairly constant population at need or at risk, whereas those who can leave are leaving the school district with the cost, it's just an observation. So it's, when we see these declining student enrollment numbers, maybe the student population, the age population is not declining as much as those who are going to the school district. Is that a kind of a valid operation? It's not that we're losing all the school-aged kids, it's that some of them are going elsewhere in the district.
I, I would, I, my thought here would be that some of them are going to private charter, however, in general, I believe our population in, in the area is declining in general, not just school population, but adult population.
Okay, well, that clarifies it for me, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Moving on to the next slide.
So conversation so far has been around expenditures for the district, and this slide actually addresses the revenue that offsets those expenditures. We start first by looking at anticipated tuition and other local revenue for students that are coming into the district, and that has, is projected to stay steady in this budget at $895,000. We also have some special education and vocational aid and special education tuition differentials that come in, again, projected to stay steady, as has the JROTC, Medicaid, Federal Forest Reserve, and indirect costs that come to us at the federal level. So those three revenue streams we're projecting to stay steady. We also have adequacy aid, including the Extraordinary Needs Grant that comes to us through the state, and we are seeing a decrease of $154,363 anticipated this year, Mr. Cronin spoke about that a little bit earlier. And so we are mindful that that is a decreased amount of funding that will come to us from the state. Similarly, there's a phase out that's happening of EFA, and that reduced taxes briefly in the '23 space, but this year, we're seeing that there's no additional EFA funding that's come through, and I'm sorry, Marion, I'm going to defer to you for EFA because that's an acronym I can't remember. And then we also have-
The education funding account, which-
Thank you, thank you, Marissa.
You're receiving a, a small portion of it, and it's no longer-
Yep, that has, and, and that was a planned phase out on the part of the state. There's also no additional adequacy aid that's been returned to reduce taxes at the municipal level or fund balance that's anticipated to be returned. So our estimated revenue for this coming year to offset the operating budget is $8,386,377, and that reflects a decrease of $158,243, which we had previously received from the state of New Hampshire. And that leaves us with a total operating budget then, you've seen of $23,762,726, and therefore, we need to raise local revenue in the amount of $13,221,937. And there's also a mandated swept tax revenue of $2,154,412. So the total tax revenue we'd be seeking from our five towns collectively is $15,376,349. One of the things to note, and I'm hopeful that there are folks listening tonight who are able to attend either virtually or in person, the meeting that we held in Carroll on November 21st, is that we do have another piece of state aid that's pretty substantial in terms of that decrease, and that is the Hold Harmless Grant, which is on a 10-year phase out, and that accounts for about a 20% decrease there in the funding this year. Mostly, it impacts Lancaster, Lancaster's experiencing a 17% decrease this year in the Hold Harmless funding, and that will continue to phase out just as the education funding account did, and eventually, we won't receive the Hold Harmless funding either. Any questions on the revenue? Sure. Part of our adequacy aid is calculated based on the number of students in the district who qualify for free and reduced lunch, and that is calculated based on values that are provided to us through the USDA. And we know from other socioeconomic indicators in the region that we're likely to have high numbers of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, but the number of students who currently have applied for it don't quite match what we would expect, so there's an ongoing effort on the part of the district to make sure that families are aware that there's value in applying for free and reduced lunch, even if after they qualify, they opt not to take advantage of that funding, and pack the kids lunches on their own or send the full price of, of a meal for their children, because our adequacy aid is calculated in part based on the number of students who qualify. It's just about qualifying, it's not about necessarily feeding them at a free and reduced rate. So it's an ongoing effort on the part of the board, we discuss it, I feel like about every third board meeting, the importance of making sure that our community members know that we need them to just fill out their applications, because that is how the state calculates essentially how impoverished our district is. And when they recognize a free and reduced rate, you know, those students, we get a little extra bump for each student that qualifies in terms of the adequacy aid that comes into the district. Does that answer your question? Yeah, there's a, there's a gap between the number of households we believe probably do qualify and the number who have actually applied and qualified. Yeah, so that is an ongoing piece of community education we try to provide, that it's really important for families to apply, even if they feel like, you know, what we sometimes hear is, we're doing okay, I can feed my kids, I'm not, you know, I'll make sure my kids have what they need, or there are other people that are worse off than I am, so I'll make it work, you know, that's the North Country bootstrapper mentality that we're all so proud of, but it neglects to take into account that there are some pretty substantial financial impacts that hit our taxpayers, our property owners, when we don't have an accurate count of families that are living at or below those poverty levels that are set by the USDA. So it's, it's complicated, it's complex for sure, and it's not always an easy process. We have some policy changes that have been proposed at the state level and not accepted by our legislators, things that would say, for example, if a child qualifies for some other benefit program at the state level, they automatically list as qualified for free and reduced lunch. That's been attempted the last three legislative sessions, I think, and has failed. And so families have already gone through an application process where their incomes have been vetted, and they've been determined to qualify for services, and then they have to redo all of that paperwork again at the district level in order to show that they qualify, and that's cumbersome, and for families who figure they can make it work some other way, they don't engage in that level of, of application. The district has taken a number of approaches to try to increase the number of families who complete the application, including adding that application to the electronic forms that families have to update in Power School every year, so it's kind of an automated process on our end that says, oh, hey, here's another form you need to complete, but they still have the option to not complete it if they don't want to, so.
And that amount is $2,400 per student-
Per student.
Free and reduced students, yep.
Yep. Any other questions on revenue? Charlie? Yes. The money that's not coming to us.
I think what you're asking is the public charter school. So we get forty-two hundred dollars for every student of adequacy aid, base adequacy aid. So those fifty-six students that went to Hartwood, we are not getting that, that amount of money.
Yep.
But we do get the, if the seventeen that are on IEPs, we do get that differentiated aid of twenty-one hundred dollars for them. But yeah, that's a lot of money that we're not getting, yep.
Right. Okay. So on this next slide, this really just summarizes the expenditures against the revenue to reflect the total tax revenue. And so the real takeaway here is that yellow line at the bottom, where you'll see that the tax revenue to be collected this year in order to satisfy this budget is fifteen million, three hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars. And that reflects a change over last year of five hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred ten dollars. And that's really a combination of the increase of the expenditures at three hundred seventy-eight thousand and the decrease of state funding of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So combined, we get to five hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred ten dollars over last year's proposed budget.
Any questions on that slide? Moving on to the next one. Tara, slide fourteen.
Okay, so. So this slide is the estimated tax impact of the proposed budget. So there are a lot of variables and factors at play here. But really, the average daily membership, if you see for Jefferson, is a driver. So Jefferson increased their ADM while everyone else saw a decrease. The Whitefield tax rate went down because we had a huge reevaluation this year. And this looks like everyone's home must have nearly doubled in assessed value. So we went from a local tax base of two hundred and forty-one million to four hundred and thirty-one million. So however, Whitefield's apportionment share went up. So the individual taxpayer there is very likely paying more, even though the rate went down. All towns except for Carroll received a targeted extraordinary needs grant. However, Jefferson is at risk of losing that grant if property values there continue to grow. And then slide fifteen. Okay, so this slide is a presentation of the total tax impact of the twenty-twenty-six proposed budget. So this includes the total impact of the local tax burden and the state mandated tax burden or swept, which is statewide education property tax. So this slide shows the overall tax impact of the dollar increase per home valued at a hundred thousand dollars. And then slide sixteen shows the history here of the proposed budget that has been presented for the past two years at this budget hearing. And you can see that the district has made a concerted effort to present a proposed budget each year with less and less of an estimated tax increase.
Say something here.
Yeah.
Okay, I would like to speak to this because I think we have a serious problem in our school district. Okay, the towns of Carroll and Jefferson especially. It's not just the school district, it's the town's role also. Because what's happening in Jefferson, I'm sure has happened in other communities. And that is that people from lower part of the state or out of state are coming in and buying our property and paying a very high price for it. And therefore, it raises our value. Okay, and the citizens, the residents who live here are having a very, very difficult time paying their taxes. Now, it's time, I think, that the legislature looks at this and says, the residents who live in the communities need some type of compensation on their taxes. All right, the people who are living out of state, and most of these people are running these out. They're business, but they're paying just a regular property tax on it. We need to change that. We need to have some type of a homestead act where if you're a resident of the community, your taxes, you get a discount. Okay, and then another way we could possibly do it is having a tax on groups in the community to help raise money. I mean, it's gone beyond the point where the actual residents of the town can survive. They end up losing their properties because, and real estate agents are telling people who want to subdivide land, oh, make it five acres because people out of state want five acres. Well, yeah, then that raises the property value of everyone up. And that's why we need some type of the legislation passed that gives a break to the residents who live here year-round. Okay, I'm getting off my soapbox now.
Rob Christie.
Mr. Christie. By the way, I've neglected to apologize for the appearance of my face. I didn't make a face plant. This is what happens when you were a lifeguard fifty years ago and you put baby oil on instead of sunscreen. So we're getting better, but it looks terrible. So I just wanted to talk about what you were speaking of. There's a structure in the tax program in New Hampshire that in a way addresses that problem. It's called the elderly exemption. And each town gets to vote based on age brackets above sixty-five, how much they will abate the assessment of your property. In our five towns, we're pretty tight, like bark to trees. Because the exemption in Lancaster is thirty thousand dollars off your assessment value. In Conway, the assessment is a hundred thousand dollars, and it goes up from there progressively. The whole purpose is to do what you're saying is right, to somehow give a break to the people who have lived here forever, who have paid off their houses, and reduce the risk of them being priced out of their life. Because that elderly exemption, there is an income test and there's an asset test. But it's a principle by which there can be some differentiation between those who sold their house for a million dollars, bought a nice farm for four hundred thousand dollars, still have six hundred thousand dollars, as opposed to those of us who have a house worth three hundred thousand dollars and we got nothing else. So there is a mechanism for that. And that same mechanism could be theoretically applied to the tax base, whether it's the school tax, the swept tax, or whatever. And the whole principle is you exempt a portion of the assessed value. Now, like you say, we're getting off on a tangent. But it is one way to respond to the pressure which comes for a system that's driven only by property taxes. And I don't know how we solve that, except that we do have a mechanism in place that can be adapted. What it takes is your town voting to approve a larger and larger exemption. Many towns don't want to do it because it means you're going to lose some revenue, right? You knock off the tax board. But in Lancaster, the last time this was done was two thousand and three. And the exemption was doubled, up to thirty thousand dollars. It hasn't been touched in twenty years until I and a couple of other people got it introduced at least last year. And in two thousand and two and two thousand and three, there were fifty-three people, or fifty-three households in Lancaster that qualified for that exemption. Last year, there were three households that qualified because the prices went up, but the exemption didn't. So there are tools that can be used, complicated, controversial, but worth looking at. And I don't know, I don't think it's probably your prerogative as a school board to introduce that sort of legislation, but certainly at the town you can. And the whole idea is to continue to fund our school systems in a way that's solid and appropriate without penalizing everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on.
We've introduced this slide this year. And, you know, I would offer that we may find other ways to represent this information. But there's been a fair bit of discussion around inflation rates. And, you know, we even heard it a little bit earlier, the fact that everybody's paying more for heating fuel and everyone's paying more for electricity, school districts as well as private households. So this year, we just offered this slide as a perspective to show, to really demonstrate what Tara had mentioned on the previous slide, slide sixteen. And that is that the district has really worked hard to make sure that our rate of increase is not higher than the rate of inflation as we've proposed new budgets year on year. So what you'll see in this slide, just briefly, the red line there is the inflation rate per year at the normal inflation rate level. You see, it was really high in twenty-two, twenty-three. That was kind of in the middle of the COVID crisis, and it's come down and sort of leveled off the last couple of years. But when we look at the percentage increase of the budget for the school district over that same period, it's been a steady decline in terms of the percent increase year on year. And this year is below the rate of inflation. So we are trying really hard, despite the fact that the district is subject to inflation as well, we're trying really hard to make sure that we're managing those costs so that we can still meet our obligation to create a well-educated population, but without breaking the backs of our taxpayers. And I would offer, just to continue Mr. Christie's commentary, there are other ways to help ease the pressures on our taxpayers. And it includes conversations with our legislators, thank you, Ms. Corzine, for being here this evening, to fix the state's funding mechanism. Because it is disproportionately negatively impacting districts like ours, where our median income is lower largely. White Mountains Regional School District is really a microcosm of the state problem when it comes to the funding formula. We have a property which, a property which town in particular, in Carroll, and then many towns, three towns that sit kind of in the midline, and, you know, a town like Dalton that's kind of on the lower end. But the problem is there. We experience it as a cooperative school district here in SAU thirty-six. The state experiences it at a larger level. And it's been contested in the courts now since I was an elementary school student, and we haven't figured it out yet. So we need to get there at the state level. There's just so much we can do at the local level through these efforts to do things like leverage our capital reserve funds and make sure that we're being really cost-effective in the contractors we hire and still do things like pay our teachers something that will allow them to feel good about staying in our district so that we're not turning over teachers all the time. So anyway, we thought we'd maybe try to reflect that in terms of how our budgeting compares to inflation rates. If it's helpful for folks, we're glad about that. If this isn't the way you'd like to see it presented, we can give it another try, another year, and just try to offer something that gets us out of the box of SAU thirty-six and looks at how we're doing compared to a broader metric.
Any other questions? Slide, moving on to Ms. Jensen.
Okay, I've got the slide that talks about default budget versus proposed budget. So remember that SAU thirty-six, the cooperative school district, is an SB two cooperative school district. So that looks different than all of the town meetings, other than like Carroll. Carroll is an SB two town as well. So remember, we have a deliberative session coming up next month where we talk about all these things. So because we don't get a chance to discuss the budget, say it got voted down like at a regular town meeting, you can keep discussing it until you can come to an agreement on a budget that will pass. We don't have that opportunity in an SB two town. So there's what's called the default budget. And I'm going to read to you what the state call, what the state definition of a default budget is. "The default amount shall be determined by the governing body and shall be equal to the amount of the same appropriation for the preceding fiscal year, reduced and increased, as the case may be, by debt service, contracts, and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law, and reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the previous year's appropriations." So basically, what happens to come up with the default budget is anything that we are obligated by the state or obligated by a contract to pay, that has to go in the default budget. And so what you're seeing here is a little bit different slide. And the default budget is in the, let's see, it's in the left-hand side of things as we're looking at it. Okay, so that last column is the default budget for fiscal year twenty-six, so the budget that will be voted on in March and discussed next month at the deliberative session. And so you'll see there's a space, and then there's two more columns. So if we're just talking about the three, the last three columns, we've got the default budget, we've got the proposed budget, which you've heard all about from my other board members this evening. And then you have the difference between the two. So this is a great slide to look down through. And you can see where we've been able to save as a district, as, you know, as we've worked through this process and tried to do our best. But there are things that were mandated to increase. So you can see that as you look through, you know, staffing for regular education services, the district operating costs in general. There were contracts voted on in the past that, you know, we still have to hold good on those contracts. And that's where those increases come from. So I'm not going to read those numbers to you. I think you can all check it out. But a really nice slide to see the difference between our proposed budget and the default budget. And that, we did ask the DLT, Dr. Anastasia and her team to try and get those numbers as close as they can. And you can see the difference between the gross operating budget, the proposed, and the default is just a shade under seventy thousand dollars. And that is a major, that is a major win here. I mean, that's, they worked very hard to get those numbers. Because it's not just as simple as saving, and you're going to get closer. As you cut things on the right side of the ledger, things on the left side where that default budget are, that, those drop as well. So it's, you know, constantly trying to chase that is a lot of work. And they did, they did a great job, and I would commend them all on it. Questions for me about default budget stuff? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next slide, please.
All right, so this slide talks about the collective bargaining agreement between the school district and the support staff of the White Mountains Educational Association, which will be a Warren article coming up. It's a three-year contract that's been negotiated beginning July first, continuing until the end of the school year in two thousand and twenty-eight. You can see, I won't read you all the numbers here, but you can see the dollar values year over year, the increase of the healthcare contribution by union members, which is a win for the district, and then the tax impact for that Warren article broken out by town. Any questions on that? Yes.
Yeah.
The support staff.
So let me, if I could, this includes the paraprofessionals that work in the schools alongside the teachers, but they're not teachers. It includes the cooks in the kitchens, then lunchrooms, and custodians, and the maintenance staff. So they are all in the one union, the WMEA. And up until negotiating this contract, we had some of the lowest-paid paraprofessionals and cooks in the area. And we needed to try and bring up their pays. And even now with the new, if this passes, I mean, we're still talking that a paraprofessional might make seventeen to nineteen dollars an hour. The starting out cook is, we boosted because it was at fourteen dollars an hour, and I think it's going to sixteen. So these are the, just the teachers, we did salary last year and it was approved. And that's a three-year contract. So we did the support staff this year. And if it passes, that's another three-year contract. So from now on, they'll be staggered as we go forward. Any other questions on the support staff? And again, I will take everyone's place at the next slide. And this slide represents our Warren articles for the capital reserve funds. And unlike most of the towns in the district, where you would see requests for a Warren article for capital reserve money, and then next to it would be the tax impact. The way it's done in our district- The way it's done in our district is these capital reserve funds figures, if they're approved by the voters, only get funded from surplus from the budget. So they will not add any money to the tax impact. And they are listed in order of where it's more necessary to be funded in case that there is no surplus, but the first one would be the plow truck, which we are going to be in pretty dire need for. And then it works its way down. But some of the upcoming, I mean, we've, we've been able to do tremendous amount of repairs, roofs, heating systems, and many of these things from capital reserve funds that we did not, they impact the taxpayer because they're in the original budget, but they didn't additionally impact the taxpayers. So upcoming projects that still need to be done from these capital, because there's, some have substantial money in it, but like the building and grounds maintenance, one of the projects is the high school roof. And it's slated to be done this year, 2025, at a cost of about $289,000. And then Whitefield has a complete new boiler plant, Whitefield Elementary.
Lancaster.
But Lancaster School's current plant was also built 40 years ago. So it is going to need a complete overhaul as we did in Whitefield. And then there's the other things like the field drainage and one of our older trucks. So is there any questions about the warrant articles? Yes.
Do you decide to do it this way versus an impact on, on per taxpayer?
I didn't. I actually prefer it the other way. I'm just one person. This is the way it's been done at least as long as I know.
Early nineties.
Early nineties.
Okay. We decided to do it this way because I was on the board then. And we decided to do it that way because every year, when it came time to pass the budget, the first thing that was cut was anything to do with building maintenance. So the building maintenance fund was started that if there was a reserve, we'd put a certain amount away. And really, it was formed because of an emergency might come up where a boiler went down and we didn't have any money to replace it. And that's how it all started. And since then, of course, they've grown. We have the plow truck and the road maintenance and all of these. But that was the reason behind it is because those were the first things that were eliminated when it came time to do the budget. Oh, well, we'll postpone that another year. Well, we did that and of course, we had to build new elementary schools because of it. I was on the board then also.
Yes, Mr. Christie.
So I just want to ask, like on the capital reserve fund, building and, Rob Christie again from Lancaster, the building and grounds maintenance, a pending deposit of half a million dollars. So would we interpret that as it's anticipated that there will be some available surplus on the order of half a million dollars and that will be assigned to the capital reserve fund? I mean, how do we get, where does the half a million come from? As I understand it, it's like you budgeted something and you did a good job and you saved some money. So there's some surplus that you can put in there? Is that right?
This is the surplus from this year and we, I mean, the administration does as best they can to, you know, put forward the default budget, the budget. But there, like there is, for one instance, a teaching position.
Yeah.
Which probably has a cost of around $100,000 with benefits that was not filled, they couldn't fill, they tried to fill.
Right.
And that position stayed empty.
Yeah.
So that adds close to $100,000 right there. And maybe Dr. Anastasia, if there was any other, there's just a few things along the way that, you know, weren't anticipated.
Sure. So one way to think about it is it's actually a benefit to the taxpayer to put that in the capital reserve fund because you're avoiding the need to raise money in the future.
Correct.
I suppose that's a twisted way to look at it, but in some places, they, I think in Littleton, they put half a million dollars back to the taxpayers because of that damn controversy. And that was a fine thing, but then if they have a half a million dollar disaster next year, they're going to have to go right back to the taxpayers. So I see this, you know, I'd rather have the money back to me, but it is a benefit to me to avoid a future expense and sounds like good management. Thank you.
It's also worth noting, Rob, that some of that is unanticipated revenue. So we do our best to calculate, you know, as we went through in the revenue slides, we do our best to anticipate what the real revenue will be for the district, but then we might be able to acquire grant monies that help offset some of the tax expense. And so if we had overages at the end of the year and did not put warrant articles in play as the budget went through during town meeting, we would then have to vote to return that money to the voters, right? What we're doing essentially with this process and why you don't see the tax impact by town is we're preemptively saying to the voters, if we manage to save money and receive additional unanticipated funds over the course of this budget year, are you okay with us putting it in a rainy day fund to use future forward? Because if we don't expend it by the end of the year, we're obligated to give it back to the taxpayers if, unless the taxpayers say, we want to be smart and throw something into savings. And that's effectively what these capital reserve funds are. They're, they're savings, but with earmarked expenditures tied to them. So if, and that's why too, you'll see your warrant articles are listed in a specific order and they're funded in the order they're listed. So if we only have $10,000 at the end of the year, it's going to fund a $10,000 plow truck, for example, and none of those other capital reserve funds receive anything because it's all about whatever's left over for the surplus. But it's, it's a way for the district, for the voters on town meeting day to say, we like the idea of having something set aside so that, for example, when we have a $850,000 boiler plant that we have to put into the Lancaster School, we don't have to bond that because we'll already have it in the building and grounds maintenance capital reserve.
Well, that makes sense and it also avoids any implication that you pad your budget so you could have something left over to put away.
No.
I think it's efficiency and we all know that our town tax bill, the second bill of the year is a different number because the first bill, you have no idea what grants are going to come, what's going to happen. So you guesstimated on last year, but the final bill tells the story. So this is a good explanation. Thank you.
You can take Jefferson as an example of that. Last year, okay, I was, my taxes were decreased by $200. Now this year, I'm making up that $200 plus what I have to pay, which is a lot more than the $400 it ends up owing because of everything that's going on. So yes, by giving it back to the taxpayers, sometimes it's even more harmful. I mean, I never think it's harmful to get money, but it is when you come to pay your taxes.
Again, it leads me to wonder about, so I noticed that, as you mentioned, Jefferson, was it two, last year or two years ago, your rate went down when everyone else's seemed to go up. And this year, Whitefield is going down when everyone else is going up. Is that a function partly of the fact that each town is out of phase with the other in this five-year reassessment deal?
Yep.
So if there would be some convenient way to wave a magic wand and put everybody on the schedule, then maybe everybody would feel the same pain or whatever, but.
Peter brought that up at one of our meetings, I believe. And the only, I've said this for 40 years, the only way that it can be really fair is to have the same assessor in every town and do it at the same time.
Yes.
Okay? Because it's, it's just not fair the way it's done today.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just.
Yes, sir.
So this is your priority list?
No, no, this is not. Not, this is not the priority.
Peter, in the next couple of slides, we're going to go over the priority list.
I'm sorry if I misled you by saying, you know, for example, I was just offering an example there, Pete.
I, I would just throw out too, and I, I've been on the board now, I think five years, six years, something like that. And when I first joined, there was so much conversation on the board and a lot of worry about the roofs in the buildings in the district. And we were looking at replacing roofs on all the buildings and really, really concerned about how we would manage it. I mean, we were talking about bonds and, you know, just things that would really be difficult for the taxpayer. So it's been really gratifying to see over the years that we've, we've managed to do this without coming back and asking the taxpayers for, for more. And in a, you know, obviously it's coming from taxes, but it's in a way that's, that seems managed and more gradual and, and less of a direct hit to the taxpayers. So it's been a nice accomplishment to be, you know, to see and to be part of.
Any other questions? Moving on to the next slide.
All right. So these next couple of slides are going to outline what the actual warrant article is going to contain. So the first item on the warrant is the election of district officers. That's your one-year moderator. And then your three-year term for school board members, as Bob mentioned, Jefferson and Whitefield seat is up this year. The second item on the warrant is going to be the budget. So the first presentation on the warrant will be the proposed budget. It's operating portion of $23,762,726 with a full appropriation of $25,227,726. The default operating costs will also be highlighted on the second warrant article of $23,693,079 with a full appropriation of the default of $25,158,079. The third item on the warrant will be the support staff collective bargaining agreement with an impact in year one of $188,070. The fourth item on the warrant is a non-monetary one, similar to what we did last year with the teachers' union contract. If Article III were to be defeated, this warrant article is asking the taxpayers to allow for a special meeting to just address the monetary portion of the proposed support staff CBA. Number five on the warrant is a request for a productions revolving fund. I'm not going to read this word for word, but basically what a revolving fund does is anytime students engage in programs that they may generate revenue, i.e. the productions, when they put on their drama plays, those ticket sales are unanticipated revenue. What the, that the revolving account does is once the bills are paid to do that production, the profits that the, you know, the students have earned go into this revolving account and can help offset costs within the program later. An example of this is in culinary, you know, our culinary kids and Chef Holland do a wonderful job generating income. And since I've been here, this is my ninth year, they have a zero equipment line because of the money they generate from catering, purchases all their equipment year after year. And if you've seen professional kitchen equipment, it is not cheap. So that, that program helps to offset the tax need to run through the sale of student services. Any questions on this one slide?
Collective bargaining, are you going to show the impact basically for town and help this pass?
Yes.
It's on.
So this is just like the title of the warrant. Obviously each warrant article will have more explanation with the tax impacts, if there is a tax impact.
There is a slide. There is a slide that shows the, for the, just for that contract that.
All right. The next six items on the warrant do deal with the capital reserves that are funded only through surplus and they will be funded in the order that they are presented here. Okay, so the first one is the plow truck capital reserve. In previous years, we've asked for, it's range from 10 to 25,000. Last year, we asked for 10. This year, we are asking if there is a surplus to place $35,000 into that capital reserve because we know we have an aging truck. I'm, I'm receiving almost monthly bills to, to keep this truck on the road. It's a 2017 Ford F350 and it's just tired. We, we've asked a lot of this truck to handle what really should be a lot bigger equipment, clearing snow off the roads, especially here at the high school. With that in mind, knowing that we were going to have, we were going to have a bigger ask on this one, is we've asked for a slight reduction in what we would retain if there is a surplus in the Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund, which is warrant article number seven. So in previous years, we've asked for 500,000. This year, we are asking for 400,000 to be placed in there. Article number eight is the Special Education Capital Reserve Fund. You heard Mr. Crumman speak earlier this, this evening that we are going to be doing a withdrawal to help support the budget next year of $100,000 or roughly 100,000. It's the first time we've done a debit that anybody can remember out of this capital reserve. So we would look to put at least $50,000 back into the account. Article number nine is the Life Safety Code Deficiency Capital Reserve. Traditionally, we put in about 50,000 a year. This takes care of any emergencies that come up that pertain to life safety. An example, last year, Whitefield's elevator needed substantial work. It was not budgeted, it did not pass new codes. So we had to do some pretty substantial repairs to the actual elevator car. And even this year, it failed inspection again and we have to rewire the entire fire alerting and smoke detection system within it. So that will be another type of withdrawal out of this account. The next item is the district-wide maintenance and paving, maintenance of the roads and paving. Last year, we did a reduction down to 10,000 in hopes that in good faith, we were showing a reduction there to help pass the bond that, that we were requesting and the bond did not pass. As you drove up this road, you can probably see where we did a temporary patch that was in a little bit better shape than last year, but overall, the high school road is still in, in pretty poor shape. We were able to do a proper repair on the Whitefield entry road. The Lancaster Elementary School is, road is deteriorating pretty quick. And we still need to, we have the engineered plans and ready to roll. We need the funds to actually lift the bottom of the high school road up. I'd be more than happy to share that presentation with you. What went into the engineering into that? We would need about 45 minutes tonight. But just reach out, I'd be more than happy to show you. But there is a need to, to increase that backup. Just the bottom of the high school road before paving to get it out of the swamp, two years ago was 305,000. So with inflation, you know, I, I don't know what road construction inflation rates are, but as you can see, 191,000 is not going to cover that. The last one is the capital reserve for athletic fields. In a, in the previous slides, we highlighted, we're anticipating right around $115,000 withdrawal to deal with some drainage on the high school softball field as well as all our baseball softball diamonds around the, the district. As you grade them and get them ready for games, you get this lip from the infield to the outfield and it actually creates a pretty potentially dangerous situation where balls can pop up when, when kids don't expect it. So every couple of years, you have to shave those down, reshot it. So that's being done district-wide this summer. So we're looking to put 25,000 back into that. A number that is not up on the screen is when you add those all up, we're requesting if there is a surplus of a max of $610,000 from the surplus to be put in the capital reserves. Last fiscal year, it was a $630,000 ask and the previous fiscal year was 720,000. So, you know, recognizing that we need to balance out planning, maintenance of our facilities and fields as well as being fiscally responsible with surpluses. And then the last two articles up here that you see are not surplus-based. They are based off of, the first one is the capital reserve for the CTE Center. We get a certain amount of money each year back from the state of New Hampshire as a tuition surcharge. And typically, we've put 25, up to $25,000 into a capital reserve. Last year. Uh, last year, uh the exact number was thirteen thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars. Um, and what that money has been used for my my first year here, we purchased a van so that we could get kids out into the community and teachers could get them out on the job sites uh more efficiently. And it actually saved money in the long run that we didn't have to um request transportation from bus companies. Uh, the most recent major purchase uh out of this is we were able to purchase a a industry standard uh sawmill for our students to learn about um the process of felling trees uh and and milling them and getting lumber orders ready. And uh they've been putting it to work as we revitalize our farm here at the high school, as well as uh some folks that have reached out that have asked for very specific timbers. Um, and it's a great opportunity for kids to get engaged in work-based learning. And then the last one is the timber avenue. If we were to do a cut, uh is the place up to twenty-five thousand dollars of those proceeds into a capital reserve. Um, a couple of years ago, the question was asked, um, if we've had an updated forestry plan. If you go back to the slide that's shows pending uh withdrawals, you'll see a six thousand dollar one. Uh, we did have an uh updated plan. It was presented to us on June tenth, twenty twenty-four by David Falkenham. Uh, so the board will analyze that to see if there are sections of the high school property that need to be harvested and potentially raise uh revenue uh for for the district. Any questions on the slide?
So, looking forward. There's been, it's the next slide, please, Jimmy. Discussion among the board and uh district leadership of consolidating the seventh and eighth grades, which currently are in the two elementary schools or middle schools. Uh, I'm bringing them up to the high school. So there is a um ad hoc committee that has looked into this and continued to look into it. Um, my personal feeling is unless it can bring significant savings by the reduction of staff by combining the grades, I'm not sure um which way we should go, but we are continue to look into it. Uh, our administrative uh finance director is looking into alternatives for uh healthcare plans and providers for our employees. They noticed that one of the largest cost drivers this year was an increase in the cost of health insurance. Um, we, as a board, we did negotiate and we were able to get an increase in the contribution from the employees. They pay a a slightly bigger uh uh percentage that was written into the contract, which we really appreciate. But it's still the the way that the pricing of health plan is going, it's starting to. We we want to see if there are other options. What I heard, wherever we go, the price is pretty much the same. And the last um, the our technical IT person is looking into the possibility of moving all of the staff computers from Windows-based system to Chrome-based systems, which would show significant savings in our IT department. And so, in conclusion, one of the things I wanted to just say is the, if you, I'm not sure if you read online, but or or in the newspapers, but New Hampshire is the lowest um percentage of the state, all the states, all fifty states, and how much the state sends for local education. It is the lowest of all fifty states. And until that system is changed, the tax burden falls on the local taxpayer, it falls on us. Everyone that sits up here is a local homeowner. We're all impacted by the school, the rates. So we do our best to try and keep that budget down, but we are up against a state that not only is not level funding education, they reduce in funding for local education. They're taking money from local education and sending it to private schools. And it's just a system that needs to change. And until you can convince your legislatures legislators that it needs to change, it won't happen. There was a bill last year that was presented by a representative from North Conway to include a homestead act that would reduce a uh person living in a home, his assessment by up to thirty-five percent. That bill went nowhere. There was a bill to increase adequacy aid for special education to twenty-seven thousand per student, which is an increase of twenty thousand dollars. Well, that didn't pass. That would have meant, I think, about two million dollars more coming to the district that we could then lower local taxes. Didn't happen. So we're doing the best we can, we ask you to do the best that you can. And with that, I'm gonna ask if any of my other board members want to make a closing comment. And then, of course, we'll allow anybody in the public that wants to make comment. Anybody?
I'll go quick, just quick. You know, we listen to folks, we haven't had a budget pass in two years now. Um, we all went out in our communities and to the into the the cooperative communities and and we listened and we came back and we discussed and we talked with Dr. Anastasia and Rob. And, you know, the things we heard are we needed to reduce, we needed to do some position restructuring. We've we've done that, that's, this budget is that. This is a very lean budget for this school district. If if you really dig into it, there is not any fluff in this budget. What's really hurting us, you know, and think about inflation, think about what you're paying for your groceries. Now think about what we're paying for groceries here when we're feeding everybody, okay? You, we've got to just remember those things. We have to, I'm not gonna repeat exactly what Bob said, but but he hit the nail on the head. Those costs from the state are getting shifted back to us. Look, look at that slide that talked about revenues and and really get into that and look and see what's happening. And that's, the costs are getting shifted back to us. And as a board, we're we're trying to do our best to still be able to have a functioning school. You know, that really, we're we're here for the kids. And so we wanna make sure that what we're doing i- is an effective school, you know, a school district. And and we have to be effective, and that costs money, we all know that. Those of you that are here that run towns know that you have to have money to run the town if you wanna have those services. And you want those services to be effective. This, you know, this this budget is is really as lean as I can imagine a budget being and still having an effective school district. Thank you.
I wanna say something. I just wanna thank everyone for being here, because you you hear a lot of things out, you know, out and about. And until you're here and really looking at uh at these things in a detailed way and having these conversations, um, you know, a lot of people just don't understand or they make assumptions. And so the more people that come that can go and then spread the word, it just, it really means a lot. And um, you know, it's cold and the roads are kinda icy and you're here, and that really means a lot.
I would, I would just, I I wanted to echo that as well, and just we um, you know, we spend a lot of time on the budget, talking about it, preparing it, the administration does. And so it's really encouraging for us when there's, you know, those of you who come um to participate. And for us, you know, we listen and we need you here to to voice your opinion, so it's really important. And then um also just recognizing that there are people who are watching at home the broadcast and will watch this in the weeks to come. So thank you for taking the time to do that. We're available for questions. Uh, these slides are on the website of the district. So um, you know, those of you who couldn't be here tonight, uh, please feel involved as well.
And I'll just tack on to that. Um, for as much as we appreciate folks engaging in the budget hearing and the deliberative session every winter, because it's, as Tara says, lousy to come out in the middle of winter if you don't have to. Um, we really appreciate folks showing up for the regular board meetings. As a school board, we meet every other week or two, we meet twice a month, that's what it is. And um very often, our conversations are happening in a room with the seven of us and the district leadership team. And when folks attend our meetings and ask questions in real time, we relish the opportunity to provide clarification. Our district leadership team works really hard to make sure that they're being clear about the work that they're doing on a week-to-week basis to make our district run well. And so I just would like to underscore the importance of voter engagement year round, not just at budget time. Because if you're engaged with us year round, budget time makes more sense. Um, so thank you for being here tonight. Thank you to the folks that show up consistently to our our regular meetings or watch online and then reach out to us in in between meetings for that clarification, because uh it does help us make the work of the school district more visible and transparent to the taxpayers who support it. It's not just about the people who have kids that are coming to the school. All of our communities benefit from a solid public school system because we're producing the next generation of your workforce. We're producing the next generation of your citizens who are voting or serving in public service roles. And we know that we do that in partnership with parents. In my family, we always say we're not raising children, we're raising adults, they're just kids while we have them. And we can only do that if we have the resources we need to do that positively. So um the more you all engage with our work, the happier we are, truly. We like to be that transparent, so thank you for being here tonight and come on back.
Okay, anybody here, Jim?
Well, I, after twenty-seven years, this is it. Okay, this is my last year. And I'd like to thank you all for your support over the years. I know how difficult it's been for a lot of the citizens in these communities to fund this budget. And they've always seemed to come through and do it. And thank you for that, thank you for your support over the years. And uh I'll try to stay out of politics and keep my mouth shut. So I won't come to district meetings if I can help it.
So are there any other questions or comments from there, Mr. Aikerman?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, James Aikerman, Jefferson. Um, I uh just wanna say, all you guys is hard work, I appreciate all you guys working. I know you, it's it's very, very difficult, I thank you for that. Um, so the Conville and all lawsuit, hopefully gonna be heading to the Supreme Court at some point. Um, the the state Supreme Court, hopefully with this, we get some good resolution at the Supreme Court level. And the state actually follows through with the Claremont decision from years ago, which they never did. Hopefully, that then in turn will go maybe to a higher court, like the federal level, maybe. Um, depends on who's gonna be taking that on. So we're kind of a controversial question is uh who who's gonna be the principal if you're only gonna have one principal? You don't have to answer that if you don't know, but just a question. Cause you said you're gonna be one principal, but now we have two co-principals.
Mrs. Ainsworth is gonna be the principal and Mr. Curtis is gonna be the bar grant coordinator and assistant principal.
Oh, good, thank you.
Yep.
Now, the Hartwood School, um, is is the Hartwood School under the, under our school board authority?
No.
They have their own school board?
Uh, it's called Board of Directors, yes.
So they answer to their own board of directors, but not to us as taxpayers and the authority figures?
Correct.
It's quite a system.
Okay, yeah, but we're funding that. Our taxpayers are funding s- portion of it.
They get, they, Hartwood gets the adequate state adequacy aid. We fund the special ed piece of it.
Okay, but still, New Hampshire taxpayers pay for it, as well as federal.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, Perkins Grants, um, as you know, my wife was a CTE director for many years in Newport-Clymont School District. Um, is the new director, no names yet, but um is the news, the CTE director on an all-four program?
He's fully certified, correct? Yes.
Oh, he's on a site base plan for this year, he'll be certified in uh June. So I I meet with him on a weekly basis. Uh, he's actually heavily involved in the CTE world already. Uh, it's Mike Smith.
Right, so did he, was it previously served as a, I'm sorry. Did he already previously serve as a uh CTE uh director or an administrator?
No, he was previously a principal in other districts around the the country.
Okay.
Uh, he was in the SOL coordinator.
Um, so he meets all the minimum requirements for, and he doesn't have to do the all-four?
Uh, they don't call it all-four anymore, but they, it's site-based.
That's why I've been four years. Um, okay, so he's good to go?
Yep.
All right, now is he also a grant writer?
Yes.
Cause I know, as you know,
Yep.
with the Perkins, it's all about grants, it's all about getting the money from the feds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, the state through the feds.
Yep.
So.
They'll have me looking over her shoulder.
All right, good, cause that's a significant amount of money, everybody, that's millions and millions of dollars uh for uh the CTE program. Um, Dr. Anastasia, you found me asking, what's the total population right now, if you know off the top of your hand? Um, right now, pre-K through twelve?
Nine hundred-ish.
About nine hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Um, now, in terms of Hartwood, I'm talking about Jefferson now, cause I live in Jefferson. Um, is that was the Hartwood total, uh, the Hartwood population at that school, is there any correlation? Probably not, but I just wanna throw it out there. Is there any correlation to the the significant increase in our taxes in Jefferson because of Hartwood School being in the town?
Not Jefferson in particular, cause I don't know exactly how many Jefferson students go there. What's, what is impacting us is the loss of adequacy aid for those fifty-six students, that's over two hundred thousand dollars.
How much was it?
Over two hundred thousand dollars.
For the fifty-six?
And then there's seventeen children that are special ed that were not getting twenty-five hundred dollars per. So we're talking a quarter of a million dollars.
Right.
So that's the impact, but I can't, I haven't teased that out for Jefferson.
That's okay, I didn't think you, you know, I didn't expect.
Yeah.
Um, so Rob, Christie and I, uh, my wonderful colleague, um, have been saying for years, sorry, been saying for years that um eventually what's gonna happen is that the retirees in our communities, our five towns, um, we're gonna, not me, cause I'm retired yet, but uh the retirees are gonna be hit very, very hard. And I know you guys all work hard, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that with all these STRs and Airbnbs coming into our areas, especially Jefferson and Carroll, um, being so close to Bretton Woods and all that, um, people are gonna be taxed out, period. And they're gonna sell and they're gonna move. What happens with that is, is not gonna be more housing for our children, children are not gonna have any any opportunities in this, in Coles County, and they're gonna leave. And I can see, when I worked on the um seventh, eighth transition team with you guys, um, a couple of years ago, I think it was, um, two thousand, two thousand ten, two thousand twenty, it was like that. But in terms of uh enrollment in the in the school district, I'm just worried eventually it's gonna go so low that we're not gonna have a community left. That's what my fear is. And if we don't have children, we don't have a community, that's just my opinion. In fact, Jefferson this year had to cancel their their baseball softball, um, the Jefferson um recreational, um, I forgot the gentleman's name who runs it, but they had to stop um the softball baseball league because we didn't have enough kids to play baseball. I mean, I I was born in seventy-one, and I remember back in the day, we had an abundance of kids playing. We had Babe Ruth, remember the Babe Ruth teams and all that? You don't have any of that anymore. It's, as a father of a thirteen-year-old kid, Deb, that's what I'm concerned about. Um, last thing, um, the old seventeen plow truck, what what, it's only seven years old, how many miles on it? I know it's low mileage because of the the wear and tear.
Yep.
But what exactly, is it the motor or is it the drive frame?
So the motor's been replaced once, um, underneath the previous facilities director. Um, o- honestly, there wasn't a really good maintenance plan of our vehicles, so that truck was not undercoated for four to five years.
Rusted.
Yeah, so that it's the frame that's starting to to go on it. Uh, all our current vehicles go for undercoating every fall.
Okay.
Um, to help them last longer.
So going forward, we're gonna undercoat all of our vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, and we're gonna get bids, good, good, good bids, they're gonna do everything, right?
Yeah.
All right, so that'll be, whose responsibility, would that be, the buildings director? Is that you?
Yes.
We also have a transportation coordinator who is fabulous.
Yeah.
Okay.
She she takes care of.
Definitely, I mean, for three hundred bucks a truck a year versus seventy-five thousand dollars for a new truck every seven years, it's well worth it in my opinion, since I drive a twenty-four-year-old F three fifty, that that's perfect. Um, all right, that's all I have to say, guys, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I wanna thank you all for the comprehensive look at the budget. This is, you answered every question that we could possibly ask. Um, I wanna congratulate Superintendent.
Thank you.
For your, your uh new position. Um, there's something I was gonna ask, you know, we got, what, maybe forty people here? And how many people cast votes, sixteen hundred? That's a tough swi- That's a tough swim upriver, really tough. Um, I know Lancaster's new town manager is a real go-getter. She's dealing with cans that prior town managers have kicked down the stairs for forty years. Name, name the town manager and they've kicked substantial issues down the stairs. She's dealing with them. And Lancaster's budget is up twenty-seven percent. And so I, do you get, uh, they get the first crack, you get the first crack? I, I don't know, but there's going to be some shocks when the Lancaster budget comes out. And it's, it's warranted. I mean, we could spend two million dollars on a new town garage or we could fix the rotting uh, girders that hold building up. They're fixing the rotting girders finally. So uh, it's, it's a tough, uh, tough period. Uh, I appreciate all your work, appreciate uh, the explanations. It's good. Um, I, I just want to kind of echo what he was saying. Um, i- if you've been watching anything that's going on in Concord, the crap is hitting the fan. I mean, they just, I want to say pissed away one point, a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of uh, tax money that the likes of Amazon were paying, out-of-state businesses were paying. They just, eh, we don't need that hundred and fifty million dollars. But the EFA schools are going to get more money next year, and we still haven't figured out what we're doing with uh, uh, the money that, that comes to the public schools, the adequacy money. And there's talks about that being cut again. Um, I, tough times, tough times, uh, but I, I appreciate all that you're doing and um, let's hope, we'll hope for the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Karen. I'm from the town of Carroll, and I too appreciate all the efforts you guys put in. Looking at the proposed budget, this is much more just basic question. We have twenty-three and twenty-four expended and twenty-five adopted, but there's no comparison to what was expended in twenty-five. Cause we're in that year. Do you know what I mean?
Which page is it?
Basically budget actual.
Because we're in, we're in that year. We haven't spent everything yet.
Okay.
This is the, this is the fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, I understand that then.
Okay.
Is there a way to then compare fiscal twenty-four expenditures to the fiscal twenty-four budget? I'm just curious because we're only seeing half the, the thing and I get the, um,
Yep, the, I mean, we do that internally when we review and, and we're building our budget. That's part of a review that we do every time. Every year that we build it, we compare expenditures to the
Actuals.
You know, the actuals.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that would be helpful to see maybe next year, just to, you know, show more transparency. That'd be helpful. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sarah Doucette from Whitefield. Um, will you remind me about the deliberative session and what the wiggle room is there and amendments? Like, what do you face at that meeting in terms of adjustments to your budget? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I, I really couldn't hear it too well.
What happens at the deliberative session?
So the, the budget is again presented to uh, the voting public. The, and they have the opportunity to make amendments to any of the warrant articles. And then it's voted to whether or not to post those warrant articles as they're written.
So in the deliberate, deliberative session, amendments can be proposed. Are they decided in the deliberative session?
They're voted on.
No. The final question is decided on, but then it's not voted on until town meeting day.
Right, but in other words, you affect changes at the deliberative session depending on what comes to you at that point. Yeah, thank you. So I mean, I just think you've always done an amazing job. Um, and I've been really obviously upset to see what's happened with your proposed budgets over the years. And I think that um, what Concord's done is absolutely shameful and unconscionable. And if any of you happens to read New Hampshire Bulletin, which is a free online publication, they did an incredible article in the last two days. And they, I can't tell you how many tens of millions, I don't know, I wish I'd made better notes and paid better attention, but you know, they must have listed four or six things that this current, that last year's legislature did to cut out so many millions of dollars in favor of some of the wealthiest people in this state and out of state. And I, we really need to lean on Senator Rocheford and on, uh, I mean, in my case, it's Lori Cosmo. And I didn't even see who Lori is. Hi, I'm glad to see you. Um, Seth King, um, I won't speak for him, but he's on record about this stuff and this business of, you know, the school vouchers system. It's, as I say, just, it's appalling. And until we have Concord accountable, how are we going to get out of this mess? It's, so anyway, I mean, I give you so much credit for doing what you do week after week and um, making this effort and facing what you face. And I mean, I have a lot of sympathy with why we all feel the way we do about property taxes and I mean, I get it. What Peter was saying is it's heartbreaking. Um, so anyway, I mean, I just think we got to hang on in this lousy interim while we push for better decisions um, among our legislators. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, then I will call this public hearing to a close. We'll take a short break and then we will move right on to our regularly scheduled meeting, which you're more than happy, invited to
Yes, sir.
To attend.
He was on the school board with my father. Oh, God.
Hey, Christian. Huh? Who's Ben? Hey, that's your aunt, right? Karen, can you come down? Mr. Jellison, are you in the building?
Despite my best efforts. I didn't get you.
You can walk anywhere you like. I'll call this board meeting to order and have a roll call, please. Miss Gooden, Mrs. Gooden.
He's right here.
Yes.
You guys clear the place out?
B. Jellison?
Here.
Arlo Ocono?
Yeah.
H. Randall?
Yeah.
K. Van Berg and Butto?
Here. Did you get me?
Yeah.
She's here.
She knew you were here.
Promise.
Okay, we will
Got to be given like
Don't need to do a second flag salute, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, approval of the minutes from December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four and January second, twenty twenty-five, and approval of the manifest.
Oh.
Move by James, second by Ben.
You're off.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Don't worry about it.
Motion carries.
I'll share mine.
Unanimous.
And I did, Bob, I know that, I think when we have a public meeting like that, we should leave with a flag salute. I know this counts, but look at who's here now. Yeah, so I did, I apologize.
No, it's not broken. It's a, when I get handed a, an agenda from Stephanie,
Yeah.
I don't deviate. Cause she's I don't deviate, because she's pretty good at it. So Stephanie will know for next time. No, I'm not saying that, I just said I do do not deviate.
We do what Stephanie tells us.
Next to the public comment period. Anybody here would like to speak in the public comment period? Seeing none, the public comment period would remain open for one half hour. Superintendent's report.
I just sent something out to you guys today, according to policy. Couple of gifts and donations I need to report to you that we received office chairs from Walmart that was a gift to the food bank. Somehow it goes through Walmart to us. And the donation value is eighteen hundred dollars. So all the schools benefited from those, I thank you very much. Then I just sent a reminder about the North Country School Summit. Did everybody get that invitation? Not that link isn't here? We want to carpool, we can walk into the van, we can go together. We can we can check in a little later. Also want to know if we want Stephanie to just travel minutes, or if we wanted to some minutes from the S V twenty board. So that Stephanie can plan or not.
She wants.
Is it S A U twenty meeting?
Marion, can you, can you believe it or not, can you speak into the mic? Because they can't hear you down here.
So they also can't hear online.
So they can't hear online too?
Well, okay, I'll start again with the North Country School Summit. So if you'd like to carpool, we can organize that, because it's all the way up in Gorham. And it is going to be posted or warned, it says a quorum of S A U thirty six school board may attend a meeting of the S A U twenty joint board for the purpose of having a discussion with legislative representatives and other school board representatives from the North Country. So we can take our own minutes, or we can use the board minutes from S A U twenty. And I think that Stephanie's gonna need to know ahead of time if we want her to take our own minutes.
Is Stephanie planning to go to that meeting?
No.
Then I would say that we can use the S A U twenty board person's minutes.
Second that. Is that okay with you, Steph?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you have not RSVP'd, go ahead and do that through this link that I sent you today. And I will try to get some more legislators involved. I did email them all, but
Does that close, Marion, the registration? I gotta wait maybe another week before I know.
It's open, no.
Okay.
So I got.
Any others? Anything else? That's it? Moving on to the Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Scott.
I had full intention of having a written report for you, but I will entertain you in non-public tonight. I I had a very busy weekend, therefore I could not get to the report. I'll have a written one for you next time.
Thank you very much. Director of Finance report, Melissa.
Nope, that was it.
I I would just say, Melissa, thank you, nice job tonight, you know, things were presented while the data for us was great, was was easy. Just, I know it's a lot of work, so great job.
I would say this is the best
SB two stuff.
Okay, uh, thank you, Melissa. Uh, school committee reports, ed programming.
We're meeting next week.
Okay. Facilities, anything new, Mr. Facility? Next week, personnel, nothing new. Policy.
Uh, no.
Nothing new. District wellness.
Nothing new.
Nothing new. Any unfinished, finished business? Anybody would like discussion on? Nope, seeing none, moving on, any new business? This could be a record here. Next is the action agenda. They can find it. Action agenda, item number one. Approve the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six budget of twenty five million, two hundred and twenty seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty six dollars. So moved, move by Ben.
Or Herb, Herb seconded it.
Seconded by Herb. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda, item two, to approve the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six default budget of one, twenty five million, one hundred fifty eight thousand, seventy nine dollars. Moved by Tara.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Chris. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda, item three, approved warrant articles for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, capital reserve fund, plow truck, thirty five thousand. Capital reserve fund, buildings and ground maintenance, four hundred thousand. Capital reserve fund, special education, fifty thousand. Capital reserve fund, life safety code deficiency, fifty thousand. Capital reserve fund, district wide maintenance and paving, fifty thousand. And the capital reserve fund for athletic fields, twenty five thousand. Do I have a motion?
I'll second it.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Chris. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action agenda, item four, to approve the following nominations, Beverly Kennison, bus driver, White Mountain Regional School District, twenty dollars per hour. David Perry, part-time bus driver, White Mountain Regional School District, twenty dollars per hour. Andrea Roy, longtime substitute school nurse, White Mountain Regional High School. Christina Burton, part-time American Sign Language instructor, White Mountain Regional High School. Mark Rabens, wrestling volunteer, and Jane Tockelson, the middle school Alpine School skiing volunteer. Do I have a motion? Moved by Herb.
I'll second it.
Seconded by?
Chris.
Chris, any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. So I will now ask for a motion to go into non-public session in accordance with RSA ninety one dash A colon three. Chapter two, sections B, C, and I. So moved. Moved by Ben. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chris. Roll call, please, Steph.
Jay Brady?
Yes.
Eve Lynn? T. Giles?
Yes.
B. Jellison?
Sure.
Arlo Iacono?
Yes.
H. Randall?
Yes.
K. Van Bergen Butto?
Yes.
Okay, we will not
Let me go first.
Right.